Good evening, I'm going to call the meeting to order. The first order of business is, Sarah sent around the minutes from the September meeting. And did any of the members have any comments? No, Caesar, you're okay with them?
Yeah, just scratched water all over it.
Okay, can I have a motion there to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
So the minutes are adopted. Sarah, is everybody up to date, all the applicants are up to date on their tax bills?
Yes.
Then here's the order for this evening. First item is 28-9 Bracebridge Lane. Second will be 20-10-05 176 Mountain Road. Third will be 20-17-31 Hermits Road. Fourth will be 20-18-06 95 Riverview Road. Fifth will be 20-18-18-40 Riverview Road. And sixth will be 20-18-17-11 North Eckers Street. So with that, we'll begin with 20-18-14 Tracy Calvin and Calvin Fury, 99 Bracebridge Lane.
John Malone, very small architecture, representing Calvin Fury. Comments from the, from Han Engineering that we addressed and also had a meeting on site to address issues associated with the proposed tree removal and planting. At this point, the open engineering issues are relatively small. I think they're, they're limited to two or three items, which we think we can address. I think what we were asking for tonight would be crucial would be referral to ZBA, so we could move forward with the proposed variances. And in the meantime, we can pick up those open items. If you want to discuss any of the open items, we can. The one, the one new item that we were not, I think we understand all of them, was there was a request from the village engineer, the consulting landscape architect about adding an additional screening.
Yeah, because that came up is that the applicant may at some point request from the state the approval to take down some of those smaller maple trees, Norway maples. And in exchange, the state wants those two privet bushes removed from the old aqueduct, which actually provides some screening for the Furies and Calves. So what I think our landscape architect was recommending is that another arborvitae be planted behind those closer to the house, so that if at some point you do take those out, we still have some screening both for the Furies and for people walking on the avenue.
So my only question there was, what is the plant, can the planting of this be contingent to the removal? Because as we discussed on site, I don't think our client wants to remove. I, I think if, if, if the removal of the small maples remains contingent on the removal of these two invasives, you know, these two shrubs, I don't think you guys pursue it. That's where we are right now. The shrubs that are out there are important enough that they want to keep them in place. So we had indicated the potential removal of those shrubs, not to indicate that would happen, but just to, to, because we were asked to show the, what that communication was. Could we make this planting contingent on that? Like if this happens, this planting needs to happen.
Well, I think the problem we had is, John, is that we have, we, the planning board and the village has no control once you go to the state, because it's all on state property. We, we have no, yeah, nothing to hold on to make you plant that tree.
Right, but, so I think at that point where we would want to do is say we're not, we're not going to do the removals if.
But again, you're not doing them as part of this phase anyway.
Right.
But the, the potential remains that you could do them in the future. And as I said, once you, once the Furies decide to do that, the village has no control because it's off of village property, it's off of.
So, so I'm understanding it correctly, then you want this mitigation now?
Now, yes.
Even though this may never happen?
Right, right.
Okay.
The mitigation being what we talked about.
Just the three, the one additional.
I thought we talked about.
Well, no, the, the three dogwoods would have to be done because the approval is continued upon taking down Linden and replacing that with three dogwoods plus rhododendrons and some other plantings.
That's already been. This is in addition to that mitigation that we talked about on site.
Caesar, south of the house there and on the old aqueduct, there were two large privet bushes.
Yes.
And the state wants those taken down with the Furies.
Right, I understand.
Okay, so one, yeah, okay.
I was wondering what happened to the three, the cluster.
No, the, no, the dogwoods are part of the approval.
Right, so this has already been verified. So the dogwoods cluster there, the additional trees and.
And now, now dogwoods are going in whether or not the maples come out.
Yes, this is just part of the approval. And this was our question, what Suzanne asked for was an additional large screening tree in this location that our clients don't, really don't want in that location. And I think the reason that she wants to do that is to mitigate the removal of this, which at this point we don't believe will happen. We indicated that these were potentially removed because the aqueduct is requiring the removal of these to allow the removal of those. Right, so, but, but we don't want to do that. And I think they also don't want to do a large arborvitae in this location because it blocks windows and it's, you know, there's all low planting through here and the views out of the house are contingent on the thing. So that, that additional screening is problematic for us there, especially since, you know, it's mitigating something that hasn't happened and we don't want to have happen. We don't want these removed.
Well, it looks like, are the ornamental grasses to be removed as part of this approval? The ornamental grasses that are along the old aqueduct?
I, I think she's just indicating, I, I think Suzanne is just indicating that one of the ornamental grasses be removed. I think the issue that we're having is the height of this proposed screening. You know, an arborvitae, Green Giant arborvitae starts at eight feet and goes up to, you know, 20 feet and it would be blocking all the views down the aqueduct from an existing window in the house. It's not, the low planting here is what's in place now and it's providing a good situation that we don't really want them up. If it's something that is absolutely a requirement, if, if the board could say we can discuss our concerns with Suzanne and we'll work out something that, that, you know, does what she wants at a lower height so it doesn't block views out of that window.
That's okay, that would be okay with me if you wanted.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just, this was just.
Something has to go in as part of the approval.
Okay, I think, I think we can accept that, but we'll work with Suzanne to do something that's acceptable regardless of you, rather than, rather than agree on this treaty. And if that could lead to a conditional approval, we're happy to do that. I don't know if your plan was to give us a conditional approval tonight.
We'll have to change it now. Yeah, we'll have to change it. Yeah, because that way you can talk to Suzanne, work that out. You can go to the ZBA now because this one plant is a contingency, you're going to go into the ZBA. And then come back next month and then we'll have the resolution and you will have resolved the issue. We have one, but it doesn't take into account.
But it says that you have to comply with the Nolan requirement.
All right, that, could that be modified to, in some way to just say that, that Nolan, you know, that we will comply with as required with the, you know, as.
We'll, we'll do it next month, we'll get you to the ZBA.
It'll be.
A week.
We'll get you to the.
It'll be.
All right, is that, is that okay?
That's.
Okay. All right, is there anything else that we want to discuss on that?
There's an issue of easements for construction of the, of the easement for the road. There's, there's no easement between the road and the construction.
Well, I believe the applicant submitted a letter stating that the next door neighbor would allow them to cross over their property to get access from the driveway into the, into what would be your backyard.
Right, and we, and we've been directed to add the requirements of the letter to the plans to get rid of this on time. So we'll figure that.
Any other comments?
No.
Any comments from anywhere in the audience on this matter? No? Okay, then come back next month after you resolve with Suzanne and we'll have the amended resolution in the meantime you go to the ZBA. If next time we can, okay?
Wait a minute, I want to make something clear. And going to the ZBA, the memo from Han doesn't mention that they need a, a variance for work being done in the aqua, on the old aqueduct buffer. So, no, but I made it a condition of the resolution.
I have to write it's not a letter, all included.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll include it in our submission to them.
So just make sure you get that variance too.
Yeah, we'll.
Okay.
Next item is 20-10-05 Michael Paele, 176 Mountain Road. Is anyone here for that matter? No one's here for that matter? Oh, okay. Next item is 20-17-31 Christian Otto, I think, John?
John. Didn't give him time to warm up and go.
Well, the first one was the former. John Malone, very small architects, representing Christian Otto, the Otto residence. So we have made a request to modify the planning board approval that we received last month. There was a condition that was added to that approval that we were not prepared for and didn't realize the impact of that when the, when the resolution was first read. Specifically, the approval requires that the sewer main not only be approved prior to the house project moving forward, but requires that the sewer main be installed and inspected and operational before the house can even start. My argument here, our argument here is that this condition is atypical, that the, it's a, it's a significant burden on the project moving forward in terms of extending the project and there's costs and inefficiencies associated with that extension. And that the condition does not reduce, specifically reduce any risk to the village that other laws and approvals in place provide protections against. In terms of it's, it being atypical, the first phase of this, the first phase of this sewer was approved in 2017 as part of the Abdo project. And that site plan approval for that project did not include a similar requirement. It did not include that the sewer main be, be installed. It simply included that it needed to be approved by the Westchester Department of Health on a design level. That project that was approved was significantly less developed than our project. It did not include the development of an IMA. It did not include a complete house design. And the, the board agreed to approve that without this condition. Also, there are other examples of not as, not as similar and not as close, not in the same area, but other examples of force mains being installed after a property has been installed specifically. There was one at 304 Riverview Road that we looked into that was in 2004 where there was no such requirement requiring the sewer main to be installed first. And that was also in a public condition. The other way the, this requirement is atypical is if, if in the case that we were doing a septic system as opposed to a sewer main, there would not, you would not, there would not be an expectation that the septic system was installed and improved prior to releasing the building permit. It's assumed that the septic system in the house would be built simultaneously and specifically to avoid compaction. Sometimes it's better that it's, it's provided after the fact. So there's a risk that would be associated with any septic system that's being installed or these other cases that we've, a risk that would be similar to the risk in our case. In terms of how this requirement is costly is that until after the sewer main in place extends the job at least three months before we can start construction, there's carrying costs, living costs that are associated with it. This is a client that is planning to move into Irvington. So all of those carrying costs and living costs can't be recovered. The extension is just a cost extension. In addition to that, the goal of this project was to have the site work on the site built by the same contractor that was planning to build the sewer main. So there's efficiencies by having a contractor mobilize a single time rather than have them mobilize, build the force main, complete the force main, re-mobilize and take the work in, onto the site. So there's a, an additional loss there that we estimate, which is relatively significant as a result of this. Finally, I just wanted to focus on the, it's not finally, but I want to focus on what risk is actually being reduced here. We think that it's redundant. First of all, that the house could not be occupied unless it had a working sewer. The C of O, the code means that you could not occupy the house until you had a working sewer. There's a risk that I think may be a concern of the board is that if the sewer main does not go forward for some reason, that there'll be an interpretation that, that the approval that we have to date is an implicit approval to switch from a sewer main to a septic system. And that the impacts associated with switching to a septic system would not be able to be addressed by the board and because the house had already started that there'd be some kind of limit. The approval, the, the resolution that you gave us already had a line specifically directed towards that. It said that the site plan approval does not include and may not be construed to permit an installation of a septic system. So that's addressed by a different line if there was any concern there. And then I think there's a risk that somehow the house would start, the house project would start prior to Westchester County design approval. And we're not asking for the house to start prior to the Westchester County Department of Health approval of the design. We understand that that would need to be the case for a septic system. It makes sense for it to be a case here. So in, in that sense, I would ask the board to, to let us know what specific risk that this condition that's been applied is trying to mitigate. And that we could discuss maybe another way to mitigate that risk if that can be identified to us, what, what is the, the risk to the village that you're concerned? But before I go there, I just wanted to set up the context for this. If we remember, this has been a long approval process. Our client has developed a project and we, his, its direction came from him that very much aligns with the priorities of the village. The goal of the, of the force main, which was pursued at additional cost, additional time already, a significant additional time and burden on the project, was to keep the woodland, this property which is adjacent to public park land, as wooded as possible and to limit the impact on trees and clear cutting. The project that was approved as part of the subdivision showed a McMansion, the original sub before my client bought the property, showed, you know, a McMansion-y house with a clear cut and a, you know, filled septic system. We went out of our way to try to ensure that this is not what happened to this property and that the property and the development, if it had to happen in this area adjacent to public land, public forest land, that it had the minimal amount of impact. So we've, we've developed an easement agreement for the turnaround with the Village of Irvington. We've pursued the force main at, it took a great deal of effort to put together an intermunicipal agreement to support the force main. We've collected adjacent property holders along the line of the force main and had them connect to the force main, which will ultimately improve property values along the whole street because these properties all have substandard septics right now, which we also think is in line with the goals of the village. We had to expand the, the Greenberg sewer district in order to do that, which took months of them reviewing how they taxed, you know, there's, there's a, a big burden associated with this. All of this burden that we've already taken on is in the service of aligning this development with the, the priorities of the village. So what I would ask, what I would ask from the board today is if there is some way that this, if there's a specific risk that this, this condition is trying to address, if we could identify what that risk is, check to make sure it's not already addressed by some other condition or some other situation, and then move from there, if that would be okay. And I think that's where I wanted to leave it.
May I ask anything?
Sure.
I would like to correct John on a few comments with some of the addition of the projects, specifically 304 Riverview Road, Obdo and Septic. 304 Riverview Road is a private sewer coming all the way to an existing public sewer. Our concerns are the public sewer going from the front of this property to Blueberry Hill. 2006, this public sewer has been contemplated, approached, funded, unfunded, attempted, unattempted. Mr. Obdo doesn't have a building permit for the house. He has a site development plan approval for the wetlands mitigation. That was important at that time for the planning board to be done, plunge pool, redirecting and recreating a wetland. He doesn't have a building permit for the house. It's consistent with every new house, with, in every new subdivision, with a public sewer improvement. Nobody, Joe Canardo, Hugh Hill, Westwood, nobody got building permits until such time the sewer was approved, improved, approved by the Westchester County Health Department. So it's not, there's nothing different about this project. The septic system approved for this project, for the subdivision, not where you're proposing it at this time. It's basically what the house is. So getting into the septic system in, if you look at the Westchester County sanitation rules, that's the approval they have. They don't have an overhaul for a septic. We don't want to be caught in a catch 22 where that septic system can't be built because the house is built, they can move the house. So there's a lot of open issues here. Guaranteeing that the sewer get done with the amount of rock, the ancient municipals and possibly the handful of participants paying, organizing, managing could become an additional burden. We haven't seen the septic system, I'm sorry, the sewer pump system installed since '09 for reasons, we don't know what the whole reason is. But we know that it's very difficult. It's not completed yet. And I feel that it's, I feel that we're not being inconsistent with anything we've done in the village. My interpretation of the state code, my interpretation of the sanitary code of Westchester County, I believe that we're in compliance with this restriction. There has been, Doug brought this to my attention this morning, large communities, toll collectors, whatever, where performance bonds have been put in place for this work. The public work I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the main that goes from, from Peter Cox's house up to the house, because that's a private part of the main network. Obviously, it's part of the building permit for the house, not part of the request for this performance bond. And they, they don't need approval from Westchester County for that section of the pipe. A performance bond with the approval approved by the village engineer could be a method of allowing them to go parallel. Also, that bond would have to include the management, three proposals and anticipated rock removal. That is one possibility I would endorse.
Can I, can I just, well, this is fresh in my mind. So again, what, the risk that you're trying to mitigate separate from, you're saying that this is part of a subdivision code?
This is, this is a requirement of the subdivision to put a septic system in. That's what, that's what this property has at this time to allow it to be built. We are altering that approval through Westchester County, through an intermunicipal agreement through Greenberg and Irvington. How do we know this is going to get built? How do we know it's going to get funded properly? How do we know that obstacles, underground obstacles in Greenberg, Greenberg itself becoming an obstacle? We have no guarantee that this is going to go smoothly. It's not a, it's not a traditional system. It's not a traditional area system like this goes into. And it's apparently risky with rock removal and other obstacles. I think we're being prudent, safe and erring on the thought of caution.
So, so what I would ask the board is what is the specific risk to the municipality? I do understand that there's some risk of finding rock that would add cost.
I thought I was clear in saying the risks is it might not get built.
And how, but how is that a risk to the municipality?
We have a house and then we get the septic system sent not.
So, but, but there's specifically a clause that says that we do not have approval to move forward with the septic.
We can't build the septic system where it was approved by the Westchester County Department of Health through the subdivision.
So you're saying that there, that there was a subdivision approved and it was, the house was in a different location than.
The house was in a different location, the septic system was in a different location.
Then Mr. Otto is proposing.
Correct.
And so the, the septic system's in a different location.
So we don't know, we don't even know that.
And the, and the, and the location under the original, the approved subdivision, septic system would be where the house is to be proposed.
No, no, the, the existing, the proposed septic system that is in the subdivision is located, we don't have the drawings, it's located along the driveway on the front yard of where the.
Size to a different building, you know, size to a different, it's not the same.
Okay, but, but this is, this is again, this is a risk to the client, to the owner, what, that they build a house that they cannot occupy and not get a C of O to. I'm trying to understand what the risk is specific, and this is a risk that happens with any project where they run into a cost that they can't, they can't complete the project. I'm trying to understand how this, this risk is different than the risk associated with every time we put in a septic system or any time someone does a, a house that potentially has rock in the ground, you know, the, these are risks that are typical risks. And the cost of a performance bond is not insignificant, right? So even the requirement of a performance bond, what you're saying is, is, is an additional burden on the project. So what, before any additional burden, including this, I think we need to understand what is the risk to the village that this is trying to mitigate?
Anybody else want to speak?
Because I, I think, I'm sorry, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that the risk to the village is that we will get into a situation where you won't be able to approve a fallback. You won't be able to approve a fallback because the project, the sewer main didn't.
Well, you could go forward with the house and not ever complete that sewer in the, in the street, in which case then we would have an unoccupied house sitting on the lawn.
And put another foundation like we had for 10 years on Broadway.
So that's, here's the problem, is as I see it, it is one of those things that the worst case scenario hasn't really been vetted, you know? So let's say that just by chance, this sewer doesn't happen. And you have a house where is, I assume, is the best place for this septic system. So I seem to remember.
That's not the case though. It's not even overlapping the location of the septic fields.
Okay, so I'm asking the kind of question is like, what is the worst case scenario? And, and how can that be evaluated to see if this is a decent risk for the village to take? I do respect what your client has done and what the spirit of your project is, because to me that, it makes a lot of sense. But here we're all understanding a risk that might happen, okay? And Ed is explaining.
It's already happened.
Right, and Ed has kind of explained that the history of this has happened. So it's proven for us to at least understand, what if that happens? What is the ramifications? So to me, it seems like it'd be fairly easy for you to kind of describe, what if you built this house and you couldn't do the sewer and you had to go to a septic? What are the impacts of that? And we should know that before one says something like this.
So, so the issue I have with that is that we were in front of, in front of the board and, you know, this is a requirement that came up at the end of the process, like this require, this requirement. And I, I think we could, we could have developed a site plan approval that showed the fallback and ensured that there was a fallback position. Before we go down that path though, George, I just would ask, so there, the risk, there is no, there is no risk other than additional cost that could stop this sewer main from going in, right? The only risk that could stop the sewer main from going in is that you hit rock that costs more to removal. There is nothing about the design or something that you would find on site that would be a significant risk that would mean that this sewer main could not be installed. The only risk that you're talking about is that the client does not have the means, the client does not have the means to move the project to its fruition. That's the only risk. I don't, is there another risk that, that we're talking about?
The rock is an extremely large, I don't know.
Right, but, but you're saying, so if, if my client, this is, this is the question I'm trying to say, so the risk, the risk to the village, there's a risk to the client. I understand there's a risk to the client that there may be some, some, something that costs more money than is expected. I think using Abdo. I think using Abdu's project as a example of why this one needs this kind of control is not appropriate.
Yeah, but you chose Abdu in your own example of why we should do it.
Right, but Abdu's got the, got the approval.
He doesn't have approval for a house.
He has site development plan approval for-
That's right, but he doesn't have building permits for the house.
Building, we're not, that's, this is the thing. Your, your site development plan approval for the Abdu project had a condition that it required Westchester County Health Department approval for the design before, as a condition of that site development plan approval. In our case, we have a site development plan approval that has that condition, and in addition to that condition says, the sewer has to be in the ground before a building permit is released. That is additional. They are both site development plan approval documents. One was done in 2017, this one's done in 2018.
Just so clear, this is how, like you were, the Holly Hill, wherever it's called, the Denardo's, Hugh Hill.
And then, and then other ones.
There is sort of a pattern of how this village operates.
Did you know it beforehand or not? That, that I can't answer. But it isn't that, that you're being burdened with something that hasn't been done already. So to me, and I respect that, again, what your client, what you're doing with your client on the site, to me, is commendable. So I'm trying to find a way to make it so that there isn't any more burden, but what you're asking to me, you know, as I'm sitting here, it's really uncomfortable for me to figure out a way to say, ah, you know, because I go, what if someone, is the old analogy, what happens if you get hit by a bus tomorrow? There's always that chance, and with this, from what Ed is explaining, is this isn't like this hasn't happened before. So that's not, that's not-
I can bring up the Taxter Road project.
Can we, can we-
The sewer has had enough progress. It's not, it's in Greenberg, of course, but they couldn't get the sewer in up until last month. And for the last year and a half, that job was on hold, and it went to a bond company until the owners worked out an agreement with the-
Right, what I, what I, what I just wanted to stay on is that the risk that we're talking about is a questioning of whether the client has the means to complete the job. There's not a, there's not a risk-
I'm questioning the means. I'm not questioning the means. I'm questioning obstruction, unknown obstructions that make the force main unachievable. The underground, unknown obstacles, rock, sewer, water, whatever.
The sewer, we've, we've done the-
You can't tell me there's no rock in Mountain Road.
I'm not telling you that there's no rock, I'm saying-
You can't tell me that there's 200 yards of rock to be removed in Mountain Road. Without telling us that, without budgeting that properly, and without showing us how, without bonding it for a lot of, a lot of that dollar amount, you're asking us to have another construction site like Abdu's, where this back goes and is parked there for five to 10 years, sitting there as a blight to the village. It's a blight to the village to leave these sites-
So, so that's what you're saying, that there's a risk that the site is, is held up by the force main, because we hit rock and we don't have the funds or the means to remove the rock?
I never said the means, I said it might be unachievable.
There's no rock removal that's not unachievable, you-
There's rock, there is, there is rock removal that's unachievable.
I mean, it could be cross prohibited at some point, where you, you're, your client says, I'm not going to spend X amount of dollars, it's not worth it anymore.
I would say, I don't, I don't want to make a financial issue, but what happens if the expense of the sewer main is so expensive that there's no way left to build the house?
Then the house, again, then the house would get built, and the, and the village would end up with a, with a working sewer main for it. I just, I just don't understand. What I, and I'm saying when you, and to address your question, George, is, is there is an example, a very similar example from 2017 where this was not a requirement? So the concern that you have about worst case was not a requirement of, of the approval from 2017 for the Abdu project, which is the first phase of this exact project.
Abdu doesn't have a building permit yet, yeah.
I'm not talking about a building permit, I'm talking about a site development plan approval, and the, there wouldn't be a re-
You have a site plan approval.
No, no, but, but what, there's no condition in the site development plan approval for Abdu that requires that he, he install the sewer before he has a building permit.
It's my interpretation, we will take to the next step, if it wasn't there, it's still my interpretation that you're not getting a building permit.
And, and so that is something that you're doing based on a village policy, or is that something that you have discretion of?
It is my interpretation of the Westchester County sanitary code, pure safety.
So, and what section-
Does this come back to the subdivision rates too? It's also our subdivision rates, that the utilities have to be installed?
Remember, this is a subdivision waiting for a sewer. It's not, it's not a, a house that was subdivided 10 years ago and a lot that's not built. This is a subdivision that required a septic system. The septic system is being altered with a public sewer. This is not the same as Abdu's, this is not the same as Riverview Road. Those were previously approved properties with their own conditions. One of Abdu's was to put in a sewer.
Marian, did you want to say something?
I'm not sure this would make any difference, but, but John, you had said that the, the time loss here is about, about three months.
A minimum, a minimum, yeah.
Yeah, and Ed, I understood you to say, not tonight, but another time, that, that you couldn't, you couldn't get a building permit, but you could do site work.
Abdu's site work, and John, we'll use Abdu and Denardo because there's right there, were for the infrastructures.
Right, right, so all I'm-
All they were received was building permits for the infrastructures.
Yeah.
They'd never received building permits for the buildings, and no one, we had never done that, not many communities do that, and it is my interpretation, after speaking with the state and with the Health Department, that that's, that's how the health code is determined.
So my point-
This is about a subdivision, it's not about a single lot.
That's what I'm saying, so was Abdu or the other, or Denardo, were they subdivisions or were they?
Abdu is not a subdivision. Riverview Road is not a subdivision. Denardo is a subdivision.
But my, okay, so the only point I was trying to make is, if, does, if you can do the infrastructure work, if you can get the permit, Ed's talking about to do the infrastructure work, doesn't that eat up some of that three months? Isn't that stuff you would have to do anyway? So maybe, maybe the three months isn't as, as long as you're thinking.
I think, I think the issue is, is that if-
Do you see what I'm saying, Pierre?
Yeah.
If you were looking for a start, a start this year, a foundation work, if you were limited to the service connection that was associated with the thing, you would not be able to get foundations in, in the timeframe. It would bounce the project, you know, the three-month delay would be to construct the sewer. This would bounce the project as much as six months, and again, I think if the, if the concern, if there is some way that we could have the board feel that there was a guarantee, some kind of guarantee that the sewer main would go in, and that guarantee would be part of us lifting the building permit for both the sewer main and the thing, I think that's what Ed was going for originally with the performance bond. That's what we would like to discuss, if there's some way to get to that.
I think he explained the performance bond.
I, 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 I'm not talking about a cash bond, because this project is a little outside the norm.
You know, John, you mentioned the, the risk to the village. In my past life, I experienced issues where houses have been built with no sewer, with the promise that the sewer was going to go in. And then the regulator, or the town, or the village that got involved in something like that, and the house is there and, and, and no place to go, and, but they put a big investment, the town or village winds up in a position of having to approve something as a mercy or human nature, that wouldn't have proved in the first place, because the sewer never went in. And I thought, Ed said that in the original subdivision, I, I thought he said, the original subdivision had the septic in an area-
Required the septic field.
In, in an area where the house is now.
No, it, it impacts the installation of the-
Yeah, okay. I knew it was some kind of-
The house impacts the septic system.
The septic system, the house impacts the septic system that was deemed acceptable.
Moved in the substitution.
Right, so if the house is built first, even the alternative of a septic is-
Well, it's back here, violates your other section of the code, or has to come back here with a house, which allows your options.
Well, we may not be able to move the septic to, to an acceptable-
I mean, we have a copy right now of the thing.
Is it approved, making site plan, Christian Otto?
Right.
But if, if, if the current location of the house, I, I-
The current location of the house is-
If it impacts the septic system-
Is further back.
And where's the reserve area?
It's further back from the lot area than both primary and the reserve areas are over the front. So this location that we're showing here, we're actually slightly further back from that location.
But Ed said it impacts the-
I don't, I haven't seen it since-
So could you just explain to me at least, in layman's terms, what the, if this does happen, let's say that you don't get your sewer, okay? You have the septic system in. My fear is that we'd have to do it, I call the compassionate-
Oh, the local department.
Exactly.
Excuse me.
What is the impact? Okay, if that, if that scenario happens, what is, what are we, and if there is an impact, I'd like to know what it is beforehand to see if there's a way that-
The impact would be similar to the subdivision that was approved, which means the trees associated with the septic fields that were already proved to be removed, that whole area would be filled. Trees would come down, it would be filled. The impact of that project would not be dissimilar than the subdivision-approved plan that was already provided, right?
Excuse me, John, I thought, I thought you were saving a heck of a lot more trees by putting in the sewer than you would with the septic.
Yes.
That's right, I do.
Right, so how if we approve this, how if you were to build a septic, there wouldn't be major environmental impacts on the site?
No, I, I'm not saying it would be, it would be not a good project, it is not the project we want to build, it's not the project that we're proposing. If it did come to that-
But it would be the project that we don't want to approve.
Right, but if it did come to that, that project has already, already been approved as part of the subdivision.
Okay, then let's get to this. What type of bond would be acceptable to the village for the applicant to put up to make sure, to ensure that that sewer main is constructed?
A typical performance bond for the infrastructure that's on public property, not the, not the piece that goes from-
Not, not on their property.
Not the piece that goes from the house to the public property, because that's a private sewer, just like we were talking about Riverview Road. So, something that goes from Herman Road to Blueberry Hill. Give us three estimates, send the engineers to confirm they're appropriate, that they include the right issues, approves it, and then they give the bond, Marian distributes the bond for formality, but we've done, we've done a bit-
Okay, well, your client's willing to do that.
Right, here.
Christian Otto, can I ask, like, what the typical-
Could you state your name, please?
Yeah, Christian Otto, the client, works in the lot. What's the typical bond? I assume it's a percentage of the construction cost?
Yeah, you talk to bond companies, different bond companies, different, it actually would be based, be based on your contractor, no matter the contractor that lists the bond.
And ballpark figures?
Well, how is, excuse me, how is it taken into account that there may be-
That's why I talked-
Environmental issues?
That's, that's why Doug has to review.
So could we try to do it a little differently, maybe? So you don't have to go through a lot of money and hoops and all this kind of stuff. The spirit of your project, I think, is commendable, okay? So let's say hypothetically that this sewer doesn't, you can't do it, it's not going to happen. Can you come up with a design that is in the same spirit, but involves a septic system? So that we can see what, what impacts or not, and then if we have a value judgment on here of like, you know, do you think this is going to happen? You know, and if there's an 80% chance that this is going to happen, then I'm all for saying, okay, but also understanding that if it doesn't happen, you know, if the, if the septic, if the sewer doesn't go through, that there's a plan B that we're more or less comfortable with as being, you know, a fallback position, as opposed to doing what you have right now, saying this is it, and then coming back to us and saying, now you got to take down 20 trees.
Yeah, we tried to look into this, you know, with detail. We have two complete quotes now, we have the engineering-
Sorry about the sewer main. Sorry about the sewer main, not the septic.
Yeah, I'm talking about like a site plan, just a simple site plan of like, okay, here's, here's with the sewer, which is what you have, which to me is, you know, what happens if that sewer doesn't happen? And you have to do the septic, it shouldn't just be a punt, like I have to go put it over here, keep this house here. If you were to close your eyes and said, no, I don't have a sewer, I have just a septic, how would I do this in the same spirit that you're trying to do?
Sure, I mean, we could, we could try to do that. I mean, when we were still living in Houston, we were looking at this property, and I've always wanted to do a force main. You know, our underlying goal was to preserve the trees, preserve the nature, the concept of the house is, the house is extremely connected to nature that's just plopped down in the woods, such that if you were walking through Irvington Woods, you wouldn't know where the woods ended and the property began, so, you know.
Totally get it and totally appreciate it. I'm trying to help mitigate this risk that has been brought up.
My concern with that is that if, if the alternative for the septic system, what, what would the board accept? Because it's going to take us a, a month to develop the alternative, if we needed Westchester County Department of Health approval of that alternative, if we, if we needed to pick up and do a full design that was an executable design. But I'm just, that's why I'm pulling the board and I'm pulling Ed, you know, are we in a position where if we provide you a sketch that indicates these trees would be removed, this would be the approximate extent, and this would be the size of the septic system, would that be enough? Or does that, do we start down a path where the cost and delay associated with developing the alternative is similar to, you know, what we're doing?
Well, you phase your, your construction so that you're doing portions of this that would not be impacted either way, and so it's like a phased approval too. But I'm just trying to figure out a way to make it so that you can do this in a manner that you can go forward, that my concerns-
Is there, is there, well, is there-
May I interrupt?
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm not changing my opinion, so if you change the resolution not requiring it, I'm still not issuing the building permit and the way to go through the CBA case, so.
Well, is there a way to, could they go out and do any site testing here along the route and find out what they, what they are likely to encounter? And then come up with a performance bond based on what they find?
I'm being as flexible as a performance bond, as my interpretation says, so.
No, I'm trying, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm trying to be Solomon-esque here, trying to, trying to give this something that-
I don't want anyone down a drawing that two months, three months from now is going to mean nothing, because I'm not going to get a permit anyway, without a performance bond. That's what I'm trying to, to avoid here.
Oh, okay, so what you're talking, and George is-
George's side is wonderful.
But you're not, you're not willing to issue a building permit, I assume that's-
I'm still trying to interpretation, because I made that interpretation for 17 other houses in the village.
So if you came in then with, with, hanging up the site plan approval for a septic system, and then magically-
From the start.
Magically still pursued, doing the sewer main, and if it all works, great, if it doesn't-
I think what Ed's saying, even if we had an approved alternative for a septic system-
That's, that's a difference than what you said originally.
Which is what?
Getting site plan approval for the house with a septic system.
As an alter, as an alternative? So, but that would need to have Department of Health approval?
Yeah.
Right, so you're talking about a, a septic design that then has test pits associated with it, witness test pits, and develop-
And that would cause a bunch of problems.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're very quickly getting to the same point as-
I, I don't, I don't mean to be short on-
No, no, I understand. From where I stand, you know, we're-
I understand where you're standing, I mean, I've done-
No, I, I'm more interested in a performance bond, because we would like to construct it with a force main.
We want it in the start.
And, you know, the, the performance bond sounds like the most appealing way forward.
Do you have any other comments from the board?
That applies by everyone to the rest of-
Why don't you talk it over next month, send some memo if you like that, we'll change the resolution if you want.
Uh, I think, I think-
Yeah, I think, we can't make a resolution tonight.
Okay, okay, all right.
But I think the performance bond-
I think it's a very reasonable-
And the, and the process for the performance bond, just to be clear, would be to submit it to-
Submit the three estimates to Doug.
Okay. We can, we can, Doug and I can speak with-
Work with Doug with the value, Marian take a quick look at it, but you have fun with the contractor first.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have two estimates, so we need to get them from reputable builders. One is actually in Taxter Ridge doing a new development there, Tonkins.
Oh, okay, yeah.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next time is 2018-06, 95 Riverview Road, 95 Riverview Road.
Good evening. My name is Lou DeMacy, I'm the architect for the applicant. After last meeting that we, it was two months ago.
Excuse me, Mr. DeMacy, I think you've got to hold the mic.
Sure.
I don't think he's going to pick up.
Okay, I'll just stand next to it, so.
It comes out of us.
Yeah, that's fine.[1761.41] So what we did is, we looked at the drawings, because we needed too many variances. I'll just flip the drawing over. We required too many variances for this, for side yards, for a front yard, and also for over FAR requirements, as well as exceeding the lot coverage. So we went back to the drawing board and we developed a new plan, preliminary in nature, just to show the board a different design. So this design doesn't require any variances, and it's also within the FAR. The only variance that we would seek is over the lot coverage, which is because it's a substandard lot, and anything that we really do would require a variance for that. And that was because we're extending the garage to the right-hand side to make for a two-car garage. But again, it's within the FAR.
Any comments from any of the board members? I mean, my comment was, it just, the coverage, we didn't know what the coverage was actually in the first several go-rounds, because that wasn't provided. I guess there was some issue as to how coverage was being calculated. And the same thing with the FAR, and then when you finally came up with the FAR, granted, yes, you did reduce it, which the board was glad to see that you did reduce it. Now, but your coverage now, you're exceeding coverage by almost 40% with this proposed plan, and you're 18.5% greater than the existing. Is there some way you can do something to reduce that coverage? That's a, that still is excessive coverage over what's permitted. You know, I understand you have a substandard lot, but I don't think the coverage on the houses, if you were to do a coverage analysis of the houses around them, I don't think you would come up with a coverage that's 40% over the allowable on those other houses.
Understood, I mean, the footprint is the footprint. Let me just flip to the site plan.
Well, you're also putting an addition, are you putting a two-car garage, correct?
Yeah, but we're increasing it by, you know, eight feet to the side.
Right, but you're going from, again, you're going from, let's see, the allowable coverage is 2282, the existing is 2681, and you're going up to 3176. So your coverage is, you're exceeding permitted coverage by 39.2% and 18.5% greater than the existing. The thing is rather high, there's some...
Understood, I mean, let's look at...
Reductions you can make in coverage to get a more reasonable amount. I mean, you can go into the ZBA with that, but you may not, you may find that they may not be...
Acceptable to it.
Yeah, they may not be acceptable to them either. Because usually, they don't like to go that high in coverage over. I mean, there was a reason that the village established the coverage and FAR requirements, and the idea was for them to work together, them meaning the FAR on the coverage.
Yeah, totally understand.
To keep control over what's being built in the village and make sure that there isn't excessive coverage, and there aren't houses that are out of character with the neighbors that they're in, so... I would just like to see if you could do something to reduce the coverage somewhat.
I have to look into it, yeah. I mean, I believe the driveway does not count in the...
And that, and that, once you took the driveway out, we thought it would be closer to 200%. And the driveway's really small for a sentence.
Right.
So, I mean, it's the house footprint with this little addition. I mean, take away the addition, I think we're still over the lot coverage, so I think...
What is the percentage of the increase?
18.5% greater than existing.
And the existing is over.
Yes, the existing is over.
So it would be 18 more over than over, if that's what...
Yeah, to be honest, I missed about this percentage. I didn't look at the numbers, I just looked at the plans and said, "It's not that big of a difference from what it was."
As far as the coverage, you're saying?
Yeah, I didn't get it from math, sorry, but I just looked at what you were proposing to do, and it didn't seem that out of the ordinary. The only thing I would ask, though, is that, I guess this is one of those to compare what's surrounding it as well, which is what we've done before.
Yes, and I think, I think that's even in Doug's memo, too, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
An analysis. If you take the same houses that you looked at the FAR for and assess the coverage on those lots, and let's see what you come back with on it.
Yeah, that's part of the engineering, which I didn't do, so I have to look at that. But, yeah, I mean, the driveway's not counting in it. It's the footprint with those little additions, so take away the addition, and it's really...
No, what he's saying is that, is to around your...
No, no, analysis around, I totally understand that. But I'm just saying, on this property, all we're adding is this little piece. The driveway's not included in there, so, okay.
So take a look, see what it looks like compared to the others, and I think it addressed those other comments, I think, also the comments of our landscape architect, which haven't been addressed. I see that the landscape architecture plan, is that a different scale than... It's not, is that illegible scale at this point, too? It really needs to come back at a scale comparable to the scale of the site plan.
So the board doesn't feel that we are ready to go for a variance, because...
No, I think, we want to see that analysis on the coverage.
You're going to need that analysis also for the ZBA, so...
Understood, yeah. Thank you.
Next item is 2018-18, Andrew Cortez, 40 Riverview Road. Great, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Christina Griffin, I'm the architect.
I think you better take the microphone, too, we can't hear a voice there.
I'm Christina Griffin, the architect, I'm representing Andrew Cortez. We're proposing the extension renovation of this home at 40 Riverview Road. We're planning to take the house down to the foundation and use most, the original foundation, and expand the house from, right now it's a 2,500-square-foot house, to about 3,661 square foot home. This is our, this is my site plan, I've referred to, we also have a site plan from the civil engineer and a landscaping plan, but this shows the original house, and we're planning to expand the house in the front and create a nice entryway. We're going to modify the driveway, so there's a turnaround. We're going to expand the house towards, around the back at a bay, a large bay for the dining area. And in the back, we're proposing a pool. This house will have four bedrooms, and we're planning to meet the floor-area ratio. We've received comments about that from HON Engineering. It's a Seminole Colonial, and we're going to be modifying, based on HON Engineering's comments, we're going to modify the roof so that we can meet the requirements for the attic and the maximum height, so we have some work to do on that. So these are the elevations of the house. I'm going to refer you to Albeda to describe the civil engineering, or perhaps, maybe... Do you think it's more logical to start with the landscape plan?
Whatever you prefer from engineering, sort of minor.
Yeah. Just wanted Albeda to show you our, the civil engineering layout. He's from Hudson Engineering.
Hello, my name is Albeda from Hudson Engineering. With regard to stormwater on the site, because physically not much is changing aside from additions in the rear and some expansion of the driveway, the only thing we're doing for stormwater is capturing the entire driveway and this patio in the rear, and directing it to Coltex in the back. And as far as impact on the site, pre and post, there is no increase of runoff, actually a reduction of runoff on the site up to the 100-year storm event. Any questions on the engineering?
And we have Michael Schreiber, our landscape architect.
Hi, I'm Mike Schreiber, WU Design's... Yeah, it's on the back, sorry. So we were, our plan is, is to take this rather unusable rear yard, and with minimal impacts to the grade, try to make it usable with the use of retaining walls and infilling this lower portion of the yard that is covered right now by a large rock outcropping. We are intending to raise the grade in this area using paper block wall to retain the upper side, and then do, use a manageable slope and erosion control methods to mitigate the slope on the backside of the wall, and using the pool as an, as additional retainage. We're trying to make as minimal impacts to the land as possible with minimal export and import. We're also trying to obviously stay under impervious, not coverage, as that's a big, big sticking point. The uses of some of these plant material are native and non-native invasives to New York State. And we are intending, with the comments from HON Engineering and the architect's recommendations, to address the existing trees and provide protection. We are trying to preserve a majority, a vast majority, of the existing tree canopy, only really taking down the smaller saplings that have grown on this vacant lot, with the hope that, you know, we can preserve a lot of these and mitigate some of the grade changes and protect some of the larger caliber trees per the recommendations of the architect. And that's something that really has to be done in the field and verified by a certified arborist, to see which trees are salvageable, which trees should, are deemed salvageable. And obviously going back to HON Engineering's comments, revising the plan appropriately.
Did you want to make any other comments, Christine?
Yes, we reviewed the comments, and our plan is to make revisions to comply with the ZONI regulations. And we actually have no, we intend to satisfy all these comments in HON Engineering's memo. We're going to add the additional information he's asking for, showing existing conditions of the house. And we're going to modify the house slightly, just so that we can meet the requirements for gross floor, for floor-area ratio. We also have to move the pool in, because we want to avoid any variances, so that we meet that 20-foot setback. And there are quite a few comments related to retaining walls and tree protection, and we plan to go through this carefully, and we would like to satisfy all these questions and comments.
Okay. Any comments from any...
On the pool, the downhill side of the pool, from the elevation side I looked at it, it's at least eight feet, maybe 10 feet high, the pool wall at the downhill side. And there's no indication, and what it looks like from the side, and from this, I don't know where the board is, but from the right side, looking into the pool, as the pool, pool elevation keeps getting higher as it goes down, as the land drops, what's it going to look like from the side? Is it just a concrete wall? Are you going to put stone on it? And additionally, is there any apron around the pool that would be more coverage than what you're showing?
So the design element of this pool would need to be a Hampton-style pool, so grass coverage up to, on the flatter sides, on the left-hand side, and where the chairs are located, to be just grass, sad up to the coping. As the pool beam wall becomes exposed as it grades down to the rear yard, that is something that during the design process and ascertaining quotes and, you know, referring back to the homeowner, determining what kind of finish, I do not believe we want to leave it concrete, like a parched concrete, whether it's stucco, whether it's a veneer stone that's applied or painted. Again, going to some of the comments that were made from HON Engineering about the pool's visibility from, you know, whether it's a barrier fence, a solid fence, or it's plant screening. We intend to satisfy whether it's, you know, hopefully, I would like to use vegetation to break up that side line to the exposed beam wall in the pool.
Yeah, you, maybe I missed it, but there was no elevations to show the pool, how it, how it looks from the side.
Ah, yeah, okay. And we intend to, we intend...
It's a 20-foot wall, right?
Absolutely, we intend to satisfy with elevations and any details that the town does request.
Also, is there any safety issue or public health issue with having two sides of the pool be walls that, I mean, could be as high as 10 feet, you know, getting, you know, safety for the people swimming in the pool or getting access to the pool, if there's an issue?
We've never required the guard details, but if it's proposed, wall itself, at least is the barrier, it doesn't have steps on it, the surface sizes and all that stuff. And then the yard has to be fenced down for the other side.
Which is not shown now.
There's a few details...
The few details are missing that we will supply for the next meeting.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so you started by saying that you did, this is a minimal approach, so I'm kind of confused about having a 10-foot-high wall that's then filled in as being minimal. I see that as anything but, and sort of against the character of what this site is. So, no, and I do, kind of basically, am kind of nervous about what the impact's going to be for these neighbors as well. I don't think a retaining wall of that height I've ever seen approved here, and I will not support it.
That is one of the comments that was made from the landscape architect, so we are going to look into revisions to potentially lower that wall. It is not 10 feet high.
Well, I forget if it's...
What's the elevation of the pool, 352 or 252?
452.
452, and then at the bottom of the hill, it's 442.
It's, it's between 8 and 9 half feet, I think, in the estimate.
All right, we're putting hairs, but no, I'll say, I'll say 8 feet, okay? An 8-foot-high wall filled in, that dimension is anything but minimal. And I've never, I've never approved anything like that before, and I'm not going to. Just so we're clear about what that is.
I think also you have an issue with the slope. I guess at the north end of the property beyond the pool, where it appears, if I do my calculations correctly, it looked like it was a slope that could be as much as 40%, where you're showing the landscaping and the boulders north of the pool. And I think that was also one of the recommendations of our landscape architect, that you should look at terrace, rather than just having a...
And just like Christina said, we are going to go diligent through the revisions, and...
Well, if you terrace, the height of that wall could come down drastically.
Oh, it could come down drastically, so...
Any other comments? Yes?
Just to clarify, Suzanne Nolan's memo, her second recommendation was that the planning board should consider requiring the applicant to have a tree condition assessment, so I think you should tell them whether they should.
Well, I think they're going to, and I think Ms. Griffin mentioned that, that you are going to do a tree assessment.
Yeah, so it's not just a right, so...
It's not just a recommendation, right.
You should consider, it said it's required.
We'll take care of that.
Okay.
We'll, we'll look into those options.
I thought I saw a tree, a couple of trees coming down in the footprint of the pool.
Yes, there are, there are several trees coming down where the pool is, and then also to get access to the backyard. So it would be on the east side of the house, I think.
Yeah, it's very narrow. How would you get, what is the construction access?
I think it was going to be around, it seemed to be around the east side of the house.
Do you want to verify that, please?
Construction access, yes. I mean, the next go-around.
Yeah.
Yes.
And when you, when you do the construction access, if it's over the, and through trees, you need to address that.
Yes, we will.
Because trucks running over roots could be a problem.
Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? Any other comments from the board? Okay, I think then you really should go back and address all the comments from this board and from the engineers and the landscape architects.
We will. Great, thank you for your comments.
Next item is 2018-17, John Stacey Bazzani, 11 North Echo Street.
I can leave. It's totally fine.
It's John's pool.
It is. Man, you guys are so argumentative. Douglas McClure for the Bisanis at eleven North Echo Street. The project is, this house was a two-family. They've been living in it for a while, but the remnants of two-famliness are all over the house, and they would like to make it a nice one-family. Right now, the kitchen's in the basement. They'd like to bring it up onto the entry floor. Most of the project is interior, however, since we're bringing the kitchen up to the entry floor, they would like to put a deck out the back with some stairs down to the backyard, and then a bay window on the north side, just to expand that room a little bit. So that all requires planning board approval. It also will require variances, since this is in the village, it's pre-existing, non-conforming, so we already exceed the coverage, et cetera. I think that's all I've got as the presentation.
Isn't this part of the historic?
It is part of the historical district.
Don't they need to go to the, because they're putting a new window in?
We will need to go in front of the ARB, yes.
They'll have to go to the ARB, but this doesn't constitute a demolition under the definition. We double-checked that at the meeting.
Right.
It doesn't need the def, it does not need the definition of demolition.
The same thing.
No, we've only had the one definition.
It's less than fifty percent.
Yeah, it's, it, it's, it's all or a substantial portion, and substantial portion is defined as any part of the front of the building, any part facing the street, or fifty percent of a wall not facing the street.
Right. We are in the view preservation district. I will, at the next meeting, provide some documentation, but this really doesn't affect the view. The majority of the works in the back, and this bay window is very low, so.
The AC pads and the AC air-
These existing pads, yes.
Existing.
Everything's existing. There was a question from Han about documenting the existing drainage. It's one of these lovely situations where the drains, I don't know if, I'll see that, go into some pipes that nobody knows where they go. So we will put a note on the drawing that the contractor will have to verify.
Put some green dye on it.
Yeah, or if, well, we'll do some exploration to make sure we're not hitting drywells in the back.
Did you see any of the comments from our landscape architect?
Were they attached?
No, they weren't attached, as far as I was asking, so.
I don't think they were. There is a tree, I do realize there's a tree back here that is substantial.
I think also Doug, there's more trees in the front.
I have an ex-
That our landscape architect, is that, give that to me. Yeah.
The house is right on the-
Well, there are trees in, in the village right-of-way, is what our landscape architect's saying, and she's saying that they should be protected during the construction because there's such limited area for any laydown.
Gotcha. That's not a problem. We can definitely take care of that.
So you have the comments there. She can address those, and-
And for the tree condition assessment, is that for the tree in the back?
Let's see, there are regulated trees in the rear yard with enough changes to species less than, no, no sign of improvements to be proposed in the rear yard in the vicinity of the trees. So, provide tree protection details.
Tree protection details was also in Doug's comments. That's, we can put those on. There's a tree, this big tree here, and this, this seven-inch tree at, at the actual definition, which is about here, chest height.
What, eight inches, right?
Yeah, it's not really eight inches of that height, because it's a tree where the, it's thick here and then it spreads out, but they want to keep that tree, and so we'll be protecting all these trees.
I think particularly the one that's closest to the, the construction area of the deck, I think you should give, give the, the genus and species of that tree. That one, right there.
This one here.
Right, because that's the closest one to the deck. The others are farther, farther back in the yard.
The others are farther back. They're all well out of range, and we'll, we can, we can put a, basically a protection fence right across the whole back, so that's not an issue.
Right. And, well, I think then the size of that tree, though, should be, is it specified on the plan?
They're all specified on the survey.
Take a look at Suzanne Nolan's comments, and you can address those.
Yes, that's, that's fine.
Any comments from any board members?
With the rain we recently had last night and a couple of weeks ago, I would say the drainage system is, you didn't see a problem.
No. And their garage, their garage is dry?
It's a neighbor's house downhill.
The only, the only thing we have to, the only thing that would be a concern is if we, if in putting foundation here, we affect whatever that drainage is.
You wind up with a wet basin.
Right. So that's what we would be addressing.
We just went with the hundred-year system.
Two hundred.
What I, I'm wondering if we could be referred to ZBA, so we could-
Anybody, anybody have a problem with ZBA?
What about the shed in the back?
It's-
Pre-existing.
It's all.
Pre-existing, running away?
It's what I was saying. We'll talk later.
Okay.
Come and see if I can tell you stories.
Okay, so, yeah.
It's included in the pre-date, that's what I'm going to tell you.
Okay, well, there you go.
So you can go to the ZBA.
Okay. And then we'll address these comments for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And, um-
Michael Malice here.
Yeah.
Mr. Gibbons.
Okay. So just go back here from twenty, twenty-ten dash oh five, Michael Fayello, one seventy-six Mountain Road. Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is James Gibbons, and I did the project back in two thousand and ten, and we're here before you to present all of the ASBIL changes. The board has received my letter from July nineteenth. Most of those comments are, are not, not an issue for Mr. Palmer, so I'll just go right to that objection letter, if the board so please. So Mr. Palmer's letter has three objections. The biggest one, number one, is the coverage is exceeded by point two percent, or about twelve square feet over the allowable coverage. So his recommendation is for us to go to ZBA, so we, we acknowledge that. The other two comments about Coltechs, we'll give the board more details on that, showing that the six two-eighty Coltechs will handle the stormwater, and previously we only had four drywells, so we'll show the board that. And then continuing with that, comment number three talks about just details for the, the Coltech system. So we'll be glad to show that to the, the village and the board, and if, if there's any questions on the, the write-up or the plans, I'll be glad to go through it. Thank you.
Any comments from any board members? No? No. I think we are in, I think we have no comments, and you did a resolution for this?
I did a resolution, yeah. Whereas in October twenty-ten, Michael Fayello received site development plan approval to construct an additional garage at his house at one sixty, seventy-six Mountain Road, whereas the applicant applied for a certificate of occupancy for the new construction in or about July twenty-eighteen, but the ASBIL plans differed in a number of respects from the approved site development plan, thereby requiring approval by the planning board. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memorandum dated October second listed several issues to be addressed, including the necessity for coverage variance. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on October third. The action's a type-two action under secret, so it doesn't revolve, involve any environmental review. Be it resolved if the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Mr. and Mrs. Fayello. It lists the drawings prepared by Gibbons Engineering, subject to, one, receiving a variance from the zoning board of appeals for coverage, and, two, complying with items two and three in the October second, twenty-eighteen Han memorandum.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Any other further business? If not, can I have a res, a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second?
Hi, I haven't seen you in a while.
All in favor?